September twenty-second, regular town council meeting. If you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on the agenda is the approval of consent items. Do we have a motion?
I move.
First by Counselor Burke.
Second.
Second from Counselor Melton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a request to speak on agenda items. Amy, I have four, five requests to speak. Is that correct?
That should be it.
All right.
Oh?
Plus one.
We have six.
All right, thank you. All right, so our request to speak process is you'll have three minutes. I'll set a timer up here and notify you when there's one minute left. We'll call everybody up in order that they were received. So, and then at the end of that three minutes, we'll move on to the next person. If you would, when you come up here, please state your name and address for the record and we will go from there. So, up first, we have, and if I, if I botch your name, I'm really sorry, Georgiana Kazer. Oh, thank you.
I am Georgiana Kazer. My husband Jeff and I live at seven-five-zero-two, East five-hundred South. We are landowners involved in the courtyards at Heritage Trail. Jeff's parents purchased our property in nineteen-sixty-eight, and he has farmed the land for his entire adult life. Several years ago, we were allowed the opportunity to purchase that land from his parents so that we could continue the farming legacy. Sadly, in the last twelve to fourteen years, we have watched our farm go from a peaceful rural spot along a gravel road to a sixty-four acre annexed parcel, which has been gradually surrounded by subdivisions. These new subdivisions have presented us with some farming challenges, but we've adapted to the best of our ability. While we never preferred to see farmland developed, we did not oppose the changes that allowed many of you to make Zionsville your home. Now, after forty years of farming, the time has come for us to decide the future of our family farmland. As landowners, we have the right to sell. After careful consideration, we believe that partnering with Epcun is the best option, not just for us, but also for our neighbors. There is no question that our farmland will eventually be something other than a field, and we realize that this will impact those nearby. We do not wish to impose, but instead proceed with respect and care to minimize negative effects. In our view, Epcun's proposal offers a more desirable outcome than any of the other buyers who have approached us. In comparison, we believe that Epcun's plan is responsible, considerate of neighbors, and represents a well-designed future for the land. It is our understanding that the mayor, the plant commission, and the HOA of Hampshire, and several surrounding landowners have given positive feedback on this proposal. We humbly ask that you will join in that sentiment and vote in support of us and this development. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up ne- up next, we have Dwayne. Is it Jibbet?
Very good.
All right, two for two.
Good morning, all. Happy fall. My name's Dwayne Jibbet, and my wife Kathy and I live at ninety-one forty-six Bryce Circle in the courtyard of Russell Oaks. We moved here to be near our daughter, like many of you, and her family in Carmel, and we chose Zionsville because it reflects the values that we are, think about most: growth, strong neighborhoods, and the high quality of life. Over fifty-two years of marriage, we've lived in twenty-four different homes and spent considerable time in the custom home building business. Of all those experiences, the courtyards at Russell Oaks has been the most comfortable and enjoyable place we've ever lived. The thoughtful floor plans, private courtyards, and low-maintenance lifestyle provide the perfect blend of comfort and quality beyond the homes themselves, the clubhouse, the trails, and the landscaping foster community connections while offering the privacy and peace we all value. One of the features that drew us to Epcun was the age-restricted design. These neighborhoods create a safe, quiet environment with less traffic while adding vibrancy in the town. Residents like us place limited demands on schools and town services, but we fully contribute to the tax base and actively support local merchants with our discretionary spending. Without communities like this, many retirees like us would look outside of Zionsville for the lifestyle they want, which means the town loses not only tax dollars, but engaged residents. Epcun neighborhoods attract high-value retirees, empty nesters, and professionals who want to downsize without sacrificing quality. The diversity strengthens Zionsville's housing mix, balances the community across generations, and keeps our community strong. Approving this community is more than just meeting a housing demand. It's an investment in Zionsville's future. It ensures that people are at every stage of life, have a safe place to live, while reinforcing the vitality, balance, and quality of life that we all want to live in such a special place.
Hold on a minute.
Well, thank you.
That was your, yeah.
Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next is Tommy Richardson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Tommy Richardson, sixty-six, eighty-seven, Beekman Plaza, Zionsville, Indiana. Twenty-nine years ago, my wife and I retired. I retired, my wife was with me, in Lafayette, Indiana, with State Farm Insurance Company. We had lots of opportunities to go lots of different places in retirement. A lot of our friends were headed to Florida. I had been in Florida at one time as a coach, and I knew that was not the place for me to stay, so I looked at the communities involved. And as I looked at the communities involved, I saw some things in the Zionsville area that really appealed to both Kathy and I. We were looking for an affordable. We were looking for an available. We were looking for a place where we could come, and our children could come close to us, not going to Florida where it might be a little distance from being able to reach us. So, we settled on Zionsville, Indiana for a number of reasons. We found, number one, a welcoming people. We found, number two, a place that I, we could continue our careers. I continued in coaching and in both business and personal. I was anxious to get into the school system. I've been a football coach for thirty-eight years. I'm still coaching at Zionsville High School. My wife was in real estate. She continued her business. But it gave us a community where we could be active and involved and be in a vibrant community because we were not ready to sit on the couch. We were ready to go to work. And it drew that kind of people to us and drew our, and of course, our children settled very, very close to us after that. We've continued to find Zionsville the place. We now are living in Stonegate, but we are also building a house at Evercott, and we were looking forward to making this move in December. We have found the community great, the people great. We're looking for an opportunity to continue for another thirty or forty years in this community, and we would hate to see someone deny that us opportunity in the future. And we hope you make great decisions today concerning that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, up next, Jeff Heck.
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name's Jeff Heck. My wife Debbie and I live at forty-two eighty-two South, eight-hundred East, and we will be bordered by the Epcun community on our west and north property lines. I never thought I would be speaking in favor of a development. When we moved there six and a half years ago, we knew it was coming. We just didn't know when. Well, now it's here, and I would ask that, that you approve. I think it's the, the right development at the right time, and I would ask that you approve. Thank you.
You. We have Mike Andreoli up here next. Mike, are you going to present with the project?
Since I'm representing Epcun, I would like to speak at the time that we have the presentation. Any questions at that time?
You got it.
Fill out the card anyway.
You got it. For the record, Mr. Andreoli is going to present when Epcun presents during the presentation. Up next would be, is it John, is it Seva, Sina, Seema?
Siima.
Siima. There we go. All right.
I thought John Sina was coming.
I'm John Boy. So, welcome, everyone. Welcome this morning. My name is John Siima. I live at seven-seven-four-zero, East four-hundred South in Zionsville, Indiana. I have been there since twenty-six years. I have been part of community in multiple facets of the, of the community, from sports to community, I would say advocates for individuals with disabilities. So, I'm a co-founder of ILAD, who are now somewhat in our building industry, where we're building homes for those of disability. So, I, like the Kazers, have lived there for twenty-six years. I did some farming as well, and as the land is parti- taken out of the community, we do look for builders of such that will actually enhance our community and keep our property values high. I have a parcel of thirty acres, which I just divided into three parcels myself, where we're building out some homes there, and I am for the project. I like the fact of what they have shared with us and, and the, the landscape, the things that will be going in front of our house, and I believe that it will keep our values and our values continue to increase. I do thank you for your time to listen to me, and I hope you approve the project.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is the mayor administration update, and we have Mayor Stare with us this morning.
Morning, councilors.
Good morning.
I wanted to begin this morning with a look at the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan process is still moving forward. An initial draft has been generated, and it has gone through the process with the three subcommittees. The next step is for the full steering committee to take a look at it and scrutinize it. That is scheduled for September thirtieth. Now, after pulling together all the feedback from that, our consultants will have a public draft ready in early October that will be presented to the plant commission for the first time on October twentieth. Then there will be a public presentation of the plan on October twenty-second or twenty-third, and then a final draft will be ready in early November. The plant commission is on track to hear it and make a recommendation at its November seventeenth meeting, and then it will come to the council for final approval after that. So, there are still plenty of opportunities for the different commissions and also the public to weigh in on the comprehensive plan. Also this morning, the designated outdoor refreshment area, which allows adults to purchase and consume alcoholic beverages, has been in place since April, and by all accounts, it's been going well. So, much so, as a matter of fact, that we have a request from the Zionsville Main Street Group to expand the borders a bit to include businesses on the north side of Poplar between Maine and Maple and the east side of Elm at the end of Oak Street. We will work on the mapping of that and the ordinance amendment and hope to present that to the council likely in November, since there's only one meeting next month. Lincoln Park. Work on the Lincoln Park refresh is continuing. Community volunteers came out earlier this month to help out, to help get the project started. The initial round of bids, you may have heard, came in a little higher than expected, so we are rebidding the project under the build-operate-transfer model, which allows us to set a not-to-exceed maximum price. We're also value-engineering the project to make it more affordable for us, and those bids are going to be due by the end of this week. The Parks Department sold souvenir pieces of the former gazebo and offered engraved bricks, and that whole process raised just over thirty-three thousand dollars, and that money will be used directly in the renovation of the park. And that's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no old business items on the agenda, so we will, we will move on to the first item of new business, which is a consideration of a resolution regarding the appropriation of additional funds. This is for the Police Department, Resolution twenty-twenty-five-dash-eleven. We have Cindy Poor here. If there are any questions from councilors, I will point out this is a public hearing. I approve publication of the public hearing. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. If there's any members of the public who would like to speak. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from councilors? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five-dash-eleven.
I have a first from Counselor Melton. A second from Counselor Norris. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a consideration of a resolution regarding the appropriation of additional funds. This is for road impact fees refunds for Harris FLP, Resolution twenty-twenty-five-dash-twelve. We also have Cindy here to present on that as well. We all get summaries for these requests, and it's my understanding that this is just simply an overpayment of road impact fees that should not have been made and is now being refunded back to the property owner. So, Cindy certainly here if there are any questions. Again, this is a public hearing as well. I approve publication of public hearing. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. If there's any members of the public who would like to speak. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from councilors?
I just have a quick question. I don't know if this is a Mike Dale question, but how does, how does this happen? How do we, how do we get to a point where somebody overpays by this, this amount?
It's my understanding there was a change in the fee schedule, and then staff wasn't aware of that for this particular project, and so it was just a communication gap among staff, and so.
I didn't really see that in the memo, so I appreciate that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from councilors? I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five-dash-twelve.
Second.
A second from Counselor Melton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. Up next on the agenda is a consideration of a resolution approving an update to the town of Zionsville with Amer- with America's With Disability Act Transition Plan. This is Resolution twenty-twenty-five-dash-thirteen, and we have Lance here to present if there are questions, or there will be a brief presentation from Lance.
I had an hockey ball way up there. Sorry about that. We were having it prepared, but what you have before you is an update to our ADA Transition Plan, which the town has had in place since 2015. Since that time, we've tracked several changes and updates and all the work that we've done. However, just recently, Indot informed us that we must now absolutely submit at least every three years formally an updated ADA plan. So, Brad Meriwether, our new deputy director of DPW, jumped right into this about day three of his tenure here with the town, and has just done a fantastic job pulling together the old plan and incorporating all of the changes we've been tracking and logging. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from councilors?
Yeah, I just, real quick, ADA coordinator requirement. Is that going to be Brad? Is going to be the point of contact?
Correct. Brad has graciously agreed to serve in that capacity, which has been passed around staff numerous times through the years.
Fantastic. And then the grievance procedure, I noticed that that was something that we had to, that was a requirement. That's, that's part of like, what's that look like, I guess? What's the public have to do if they want to send out a grievance with regards to ADA?
Most of them are informal. We'll receive an email notifying us of a condition or a situation. However, we must post on the website something that's prominently displayed where people can submit a form, submit their requests, submit their information, et cetera, and then we log those when they're formally made. So, we're going to kind of reinstate some things that used to be on the website that we've discovered had fallen by the wayside in recent years. So, as soon as this is adopted, we'll be integrating this information onto our website.
And will this allow us to receive more funds federally? Is that essentially where we're?
Well, yes. Indot has tied this submission requirement to eligibility for federal funds, and we typically don't get federal funds. We haven't had a significant project that was competitive in the region to get federal funds. However, they have tied it to community crossings, which we get each and every year, and we get a substantial amount. So, it is very important, I think, that we get this in in a timely manner to maintain our eligibility for that program.
Yeah, I, I think the county does community crossings too, right? Is that, is that right? And?
Pretty much everybody does, and if you're not getting crossings, you're not doing it right.
Yeah, so my understanding is they tie it to the road projects occasionally to where you have to upgrade the ADA access and cross points?
Correct. That's a, that's a federal highway requirement. Anytime we do anything more significant than just crack sealing, meaning anytime we resurface a road, we absolutely have to bring the adjacent ADA curbs up to standards if they are not already.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. That's all.
Yeah, the disability committee was definitely looking into projects that have already been done, projects that are projected, and I do think there's some interest in coordinating with that information. I don't know if you had been in contact with anyone from?
Yes, Mr. Easterday, who was the chair of that committee, had been doing some fact-finding over the last several months with our town engineer, who is currently officially the ADA coordinator, and when this effort materialized, I reached out to Tom, and I said, hey, just didn't want you to think that anybody advanced anything without your participation or awareness. So, he's aware of this, and we look forward to helping that committee or working with that committee however we can.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions from councilors? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. I will make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-five-dash-thirteen.
Second.
A second from Counselor Norris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. Up next on the agenda is the consideration of an ordinance amending the town's Zionsville zoning ordinance. This is Petition twenty-twenty-five-dash-fifty-two-dash-Z. This is from Lions Club Park. We have Mike Dale, Director of Planning and Building Department, to walk us through this. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Lions Club is here this morning to rezone, or request a rezoning, for two parcels totaling seven-point-five acres from the urban RV district and the urban VBDs, or there's two zoning districts involved, to the town's urban special use SU-seven zoning district. The project would change the zoning of the two adjacent parcels to match the zoning of the, of the existing park. The proposal is consistent with the recommendation of the comp plan that designates this area for park use. The two parcels are located north of Sycamore Street, east of Elm, adjacent to Lions Park. On August eighteenth, the plant commission held a hearing, and at which time, after taking public input, forwarded a unanimous favorable recommendation to you, the town council. The plant commission did not hear any opposition or remonstrance to the project, except for one person who expressed concerns about the noise associated with the existing pickleball courts. More questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Dale?
Thank you.
If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I do have questions. Did we correct this on the ordinance? Why was it highlighted for February third?
That's just a typo.
Okay. Okay. And then, obviously, this passing this would then have to be reflected in the new comprehensive plan, so that update would need to go to HWC or?
Well, we can certainly inform HWC. It doesn't necessarily need to be reflected in the comprehensive plan, but, but may. Thank you.
Any other questions from councilors? Adam, if there's a motion for approval on this, does that need to be considered with the modification of the correct date likely on the ordinance?
Yeah, I would have it corrected.
Okay, all right. At this point, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Ordinance twenty-twenty-five-twenty-two with the approved correction.
Second.
First from Counselor Sampson, and a second from Counselor Melton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. All right, up next on the agenda is a consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, Petition twenty-twenty-five-dash-forty-dash-Z, the courtyards of Heritage Square. This is Ordinance twenty-twenty-one. Mike Dale, Director of Planning and Building. We'll also have Dale Pfeifer, Land Acquisition for Epcun Communities, and Attorney Mike Andreoli available as well.
Good morning again. Epcun Communities is here this morning to request a rezoning of several parcels totaling one-hundred-and-eighty acres in Worth Township. The project involves the development of three-hundred-and-sixty-two single-family age-restricted lots and dedication of twenty-six acres to the town. The site is bounded by County Roads four-hundred South, seven-fifty East, five-hundred South, also known as Whitestown Road, and County Road eight-hundred East. The petition is to rezone the area from, from Rural R-one, which is a single-family zoning district, to the planned unit development zoning district. East of the site, east of County Road eight-hundred East, is the Hampshire Residential Subdivision, and north and adjacent to the site is a segment of the Big Four Rail Trail. The comprehensive plan recommends this area for ag, general, that generally discourages uses other than farm-related residential development for this area and instead promotes sustained production of agricultural products. However, the plan also states that where development would be contemplated for this area, that buffering between different land uses be incorporated to reflect the rural character of the area. The gross density of this project, consisting of, again, three-hundred-and-sixty-two lots on one-hundred-and-eighty acres, is two-point-zero dwelling units per acre. The net density, if you were to exclude the twenty-six acre dedicated parcel, would yield about two-point-four dwelling units per acre. In May, the town's advisory technical committee reviewed the project for compliance with local policies and regulations. Members of that tack group included Department of Public Works, the planning department, fire department, and Boone County Highway. The petition responded with the addition of a perimeter pathway along Whitestown Road and other revisions to the PUD text exhibits. The petitioner has submitted a traffic impact study, which did not identify significant improvements to the street network. Then the study has been reviewed by the Department of Public Works. The proposed PUD ordinance includes text and exhibits that identify the overall site layout, driveway locations, perimeter landscaping requirements, permitted uses, lot development standards, commitments, and restrictions relating to the twenty-six acre dedicated parcel, among other things. On August eighteenth, the plant commission conducted a public hearing, and during that meeting, the plant commission heard testimony from two residents. The first resident spoke favorably, but raised concerns about traffic impacts. The second resident spoke unfavorably. The second resident spoke unfavorably in terms of added traffic, too many lots, the smaller lots, and the visibility of the air conditioner units. Following public input and deliberation, the Plan Commission forwarded a unanimous favorable recommendation to the town council.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any questions for Mike before we hear from the petitioner? All right. Thanks, Mike.
Well, good morning, councilors. My name is Dale Pfeifer. I lead the land acquisition for Epcun Communities, and we have offices at 11555 North Meridian Street in Carmel. And we're grateful to finally come before you, as this project has been vetted for over two years, unanimously supported by your Plan Commission, and faced only one remonstrator, just one. We understand the concerns about growth, but Epcun is different. Low-impact, private courtyards and delivering benefits far beyond typical subdivisions. Think of Heritage Trail as economic development in its most responsible form. Heritage Trail is an exclusive 55-plus lifestyle community. Our homes are upscale with resort-style amenities. No other builder in Indy delivers this kind of product. What sets us apart is our copyrighted courtyard design that puts the outdoor space in between the homes. Every lot has deed-restricted green backyards with no trampolines, no swing sets, no sheds. Our courtyards of Russell Oaks has proven to meet Zionsville's high standards with average prices over $800,000. Here's the key: Russell Oaks will be sold out before Heritage even begins closings. So this isn't actually added new growth. It's the continuation of proven low-impact success. You may not think of this as economic development, but it absolutely is. You see, our buyers are affluent, empty nesters half live within three miles, the rest are grandbaby chasers. I like to say they are givers, not takers. They fuel local shops, restaurants, but add no strain on the schools. They're the holy grail of economic development, all benefit, no burden. We're not bringing people who take, we're keeping people who give. And Zionsville's 55-plus population is booming, 28% growth rate. But here's the issue: Zionsville lacks the right kind of housing to retain them. These are your longtime residents, the very fabric of this community. If we don't give them options, they'll leave and take their wealth with them. So we offer a unique solution. When seniors downsize into Epcun, their larger homes turn over to younger families moving into Zionsville without having to build a new subdivision. It's real. We have the data from other communities that support that fact. At Heritage Trail, that's projected to be over 100 existing Zionsville homes, the equivalent of an entire new subdivision, without having to approve one. Let's talk economics, especially relevant today as we hold these budget hearings. Zionsville is projected to lose $3.5 million under the new tax caps. Meanwhile, Epcun is bringing $200 million in private investment for this community that will generate more than $50 million in direct benefit to Zionsville over 20 years. And that includes 2.4 million in new annual tax revenues, 2.5 million in one-time fees, and a $4 million land value donation. And we're not asking for a dime here. No TIF, no subsidies, no fee credits. We're also age-restricting. That limits our market, but ensures families with schoolkids won't choose to live here. Importantly, this preserves the town's TIF authority, so if you ever need to fund a fire station or improve the land we're donating to you, you still can. Yes, tax revenue builds over time, but that's exactly why you need to start now with us. Waiting only guarantees higher-impact projects later. Approve Heritage Trail now, you lock in $50 million in benefits at no cost to Zionsville. Let's turn to the location. This is exactly the right location for responsible residential growth. It's not sprawl. It's along a major collector road, right next to Hampshire, approved 20 years ago at the same R2 zoning. It's the natural step in Zionsville's growth, with zero impact on Zionsville schools since it's entirely within Lebanon School District. Right road, right neighbor, right time. According to the Town Zone Parks Department, this land has no important characteristics. It's almost all row-cropped farmland. That's why state builders have not pursued it, and why, save rule, Zionsville hasn't opposed it. This isn't preservation ground. It's the right location for smart growth. Counselors, after many months of professional planning and public input, your draft comp plan designates the site in yellow as conventional subdivision. This wasn't casual. It reflects your consultants' analysis of traffic, land suitability, and other things that keep Zionsville unique. And through every revision, that designation hasn't changed. Your staff, even the professional planner on Plan Commission, reviewed our age-restricted 2.0 density and found it appropriate here. So Epcun is delivering exactly what the plan calls for: medium-density residential on a designated priority corridor. On a net basis, we're actually less than Russell Oaks at 3.0. Take a look at the map. The brown areas are estate residential. That's where projects like Bradley Ridge and Holiday Farms belong, not here. Concerned about Whitestown? Well, we're one property removed, creating a clean, logical edge. Bottom line, this isn't sprawl, this is smart growth, exactly where your plan calls for it. Your staff and your planners say it belongs. One of my biggest pet peeves in zoning is when people just stop at one thing. What's the density? Density is just a number. It's really impact that matters. And Epcun homes average just 1.7 residents per home. A conventional subdivision, 3.6. That's half the people, half the traffic, half the flushes, and no kids in Zionsville schools. So while we show 2.0 units per acre on paper, we actually function like 1.0 density neighborhood, but with all the benefits. Said differently, same impact as today's current R1 zoning, but with all the benefits. I know density precedent is a concern, but approving Heritage Trail at 2.0 doesn't open the door. It actually closes it. First, our community is age-restricted. That's what I call a moat. No adjacent land can match our density unless they are also approved by you to age-restrict. That's why staff and Plan Commission supported us. Second, Epcun is privately funding over three miles of mains and new lift station, and because our age-restricted homes generate lower flows, and once our taps are allocated, any future project would be capped around 1.75 per acre, unless they also age-restrict. So our 2.0 just can't be repeated. Third, there's very little land even left in this service area. Only three parcels total, with just one 80-acre track identified on a priority corridor. So I ask the question, are we really going to give up $50 million in benefits and a 26-acre donation to guard against only 80 acres? Bottom line, our site is the exception, not the rule. This isn't a gateway to more density, it's the moat that contains it. So let's just continue on with Epcun. You get one builder, one cohesive master plan, phased in eight to nine years. This PUD locks you into Epcun's model. Epcun is the safer, more predictable choice. Some say there's too much growth, but really, only in the last five years, only four single-family PODs have been approved. That amounts to only 150 permits a year. That's really not runaway growth. Let's turn to our low-impact plan. We've heard some comments that our homes feel too close together.
What did you just say right there? In the last, in the last few years, only how many?
Four, four PODs with single-family components.
PODs, yeah. Got it.
We've heard that our homes feel too close together, but that's not a flaw, that's by design. Our layout actually draws from timeless TND communities like Stonegate and West Clay. It's compact and connected by design. To grow smart, Zionsville needs housing diversity. Not every home should be just an estate home. This is world-class planning. On paper, we may look dense, but in reality, our compact design preserves more land. We're preserving over 50% of the open space, double what's required, and that's what makes the 26-acre donation possible. Large lots may look nice, but they sprawl. Our approach follows the smart growth and conservation design principles found in the comp plan. Heritage Trail delivers three amenity centers, a Big Four rail connection, and a once-in-a-generation gift to the town. This is a chance to create a welcome-to-Zionsville entrance with Whitestown, and it's 100% yours to control. Without Epcun, no land is donated. When the town asked for ball fields, we thought it was great, so we changed course. We invested over nine months, delayed filings, and spent tens of thousands of dollars redesigning our site, all to the answer of that request.
I'm sorry, and I hate, I hate to interrupt, just for clarification.
Yep.
The town asked for the ball fields in this?
The mayor came to us.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So let's be real, the ball fields aren't exactly a natural fit next to our community, but we did because the trade-off was clear: density in exchange for that donation. But if the town doesn't really want the ball fields or public land, we'll fold it back into our community, with fewer homes, more open space, stronger buffers, spread across the site where people can see it. So the bottom line, the choice is yours. Lock in the 26 acres for public use today, or we can continue and return later with lower density in all residential plan. Heritage Trail also lifts values compared to Hampshire. Our homes will sell for $200,000 more on average, double the price per square foot. Let's turn to traffic. Traffic remains a top concern, so let me be clear. This project has been studied by licensed traffic engineers, not opinions, facts. Their analysis confirmed the impact is minimal. In fact, no improvements were even required. That's because Epcun generates 60% fewer trips than a traditional subdivision of the same size. And yes, a traditional builder could absolutely put the same number of homes here with far greater impact. So think about it with Epcun: no school buses, no teen drivers running, cutting through Hampshire on e-bikes, residents traveling mostly off-peak, and many are gone for the winters. Traffic phases in gradually over 10 years, not overnight. So in almost all of our, this is important, almost all of our traffic flows to County Road 800, which is a designated priority corridor, a major collector designed to handle higher traffic volumes than it carries today. This isn't a country road, it's exactly where density belongs. We have full neighbor support. That's pretty evident with, with all the speakers, and again, only one person has spoken out against us. We listen to our neighbors and completely redesign the plan in their favor. Notice on the plan, every perimeter green line you see will have a four-foot-high landscape berms and layers of horse fencing and trees. Our community would be much more screened and landscaped from Hampshire, like, than Hampshire is today from County Road 800. That's why Hampshire HOA reaffirmed their formal letter of support in why there's no organized opposition. We get there's always going to be some people that feel like they own their view, but in our case, the very people, the very people directly impacted by us, the neighbors next door, believe this is a better outcome. That should carry a lot of weight. So after some rigid vetting, Plan Commission and staff has made a positive unanimous recommendation and found our proposal checks every box and aligns with the medium-density goals. So the real question is, this land will develop? The real question is, how? It's already zone residential, and the owners are ready to sell, so what's the best possible outcome? With us, everybody wins. In closing, Heritage Trail is an economic development paired with the right housing and the right location for the right people at the right time. The draft comp plan supports it. The mayor, staff, neighbors, and Plan Commission have all supported it. Say no, affluent seniors leave for Carmel and Westfield. Other builders pile on with higher-impact projects. Zionsville loses $50 million in benefits. Say yes, you side with neighbors and deliver smart, measured growth with no more burden than Russell Oaks. Bottom line, Heritage Trail functions like 1.0 density, but with 2.0 of the benefits. With Epcun, you lock into the safe, smartest outcome, growth without compromise. This is why it's uniquely Zionsville, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Mr. President, if you might, I'd like just a very short, brief couple of comments.
Sure.
As it relates to the dedication property, we, we took several steps during the PUD, including substantial meetings with members of the Plan Commission themselves, as well as staff, as it relates to some of the language with regard to the dedication. When Mr. Pfeifer mentioned ball fields, that was not in conjunction with any discussions had with the council. That was some initial thoughts as to what it might be, what it could be, and how much land might be needed for that. We originally started with a dedication of a much smaller amount of land, and as the discussions morphed with the administration, a larger parcel was discussed, ultimately centering on 26 acres. Ultimately, the decision with regard to the dedication, if approved by the council, is up to the council itself. The actual PUD provides for a dedication agreement to be prepared and executed between Epcun and the council with approval from the mayor as well. So all of those things are well within the council's good offices as it relates to the potential uses. All we would say about it is that we've provided in the PUD documents full, I think, flexibility for the town council to come to a decision as to what you would want the 26 acres to be. That would be your decision, impacted not by us in any measure. Simply a dedication of land, we would simply need to know when that dedication would be, and the language of the PUD is wide enough to give you many options on what you think would be best for the 26 acres, not, not anything in our opinion. Thank you, sir.
You bet. All right. As Mr. Dale expressed in the introduction, this was forwarded to the town council from the Plan Commission, so this will be a vote for approval or denial today. Are there any questions from council? For any of the petitioners?
I need to talk about sewer capacity in the sewer district. Mr. Pfeifer, would you be able to educate me a little bit on where sewer's at with this particular area in terms of? My understanding is, the reason I ask is, I believe it falls within Whitestown jurisdiction? Is this maybe a Mr. Lance?
I'm looking around for the utility experts, but, all right, Lance, if you don't mind, because I'll butcher it.
Sorry, George and Lance.
No, that's quite all right. I've asked George to step up here because he's been most closely involved in the technical review of this project as it has evolved through the approval process. So the brief history is County Road 800 East, this project is just west of that. Several, for many years, was in the Whitestown Sewer Service area, and there had been an effort many years ago to assign sewer areas, going back to the days of the Boone County Utilities era, which pretty much said if you're living in these areas, this is ultimately going to be your provider. I think it's also important to realize that even if you have a development in our sewer service territory, we have challenges serving those as well. So when it comes to this particular location, a couple of years ago, Whitestown amended their master sewer plan and withdrew their planned sewer. ago, Whitestown amended their master sewer plan and withdrew their planned sewer service territory back to the west, so it has created a little bit of a gap of no man's land. And the obligation to provide sewers to this, I think, is really questionable. Are we obligated by virtue of it being solely within Zionsville's corporate limits, even though it's the rural service district? I don't know. However, I can empathize with the feeling of frustration with property owners, which is like, who is going to service? And what I can say is that throughout this process, they've been very good to work with, very accommodating. And while I'll say what I initially looked at as a hurdle, or an obstacle, or something that wasn't fully embraced, because this is an area that has never been included in our calculations for our entire service sewers. I'm going to trip all over that. I'm sorry this morning. Service area. You may recall a presentation last year where we said when we grow up, our plant's going to need to be a 2.5 MGD, million gallon per day plant, where we're a 2 million gallon per day right now. Well, that took the whole service territory as we understood it to be and accepted it at that time. This area was not part of that. So, my first reaction to this is, was to protect the utility and protect the capacity of the plant, protect the capacity of our collection system. But in discussions with the developer, I now see this as potentially an opportunity, because right around the corner, we have areas that have always been considered to be within our sewer service area that face the same limitations in capacities in the system that this site does. So, I'm going to stop there. I may have strayed from your question, and you can get me back on track with any other questions that you have.
No. Do you have any concerns about serving this potential development in the future?
I do not at this point. As I said, the discussions with the developer and their team have been very productive. They've been very accommodating. They've listened to Mr. Lewis as our town engineer, also an engineer who has practiced in designing systems and plants, and so far, all the discussions are taking us in a positive direction.
Any other questions from councilors?
Yeah, Mr. Andrew.
Thanks to Mr. Lance for answering that question. It's also important, I think, for the council to know that we funded, when I say we, it's EPCON, funded a substantial sewer investigation study with regard to the ability to be able to go ahead and provide sanitary sewer functions in terms of cost, accessibility, timing, those types of things, and submitted that as part of our application. That was done at the get-go to know whether or not this area could be served, how it would be served, and whether it would be appropriate for the town, and hopefully that played a role in the answers that Mr. Lance gave you today. One of the other thoughts that I have, I see that Commissioner McAlderi is not in attendance today. Given the fact that this is his area, would it be smarter, intelligent, and we would certainly have no objection, to make sure that he was here to express his views publicly with regard to something in his area? We've had discussions, and we're not aware that Mr. McAlderi was unavailable.
Yeah.
Pardon?
We weren't either. We found out this morning.
No.
And this Louis, we're all sitting up here.
So, I would say respectfully, Mike, I have no problems with the intelligence level of this council. Councilor McAlderi texted me last night at 7 o'clock saying he wasn't going to be available this morning. He has to be in San Francisco. So, he's on a flight right now as we speak.
Well, it might be interesting for the public to hear what his thoughts are, given the fact that this is his district.
Sure.
I understand he may have talked to you, Mr. President, but the public might be interested.
Well, I'm just saying he texted me last night.
Very good. Thank you.
That was the communication. I will go on record as just simply saying I have no problem with the product that EPCON puts together. They've done a phenomenal job in the Russell Oaks development. I was part of the approval process for that. As I've shared from the very beginning, I have no problem with the EPCON development. They do a really good product. I think the folks that are living there are happy with that. I think the neighbors are happy with the process of that development to the best that they can be. I would just say from my perspective, this abuts my district, and while I appreciate Mr. Pfeiffer's comments about 800, when you get south of 550 on 800, that road is very, very narrow, and that's going to require a significant amount of work, I think, as we go through this, regardless of what goes up there. I think when it was originally brought to council leadership in early 2025, we mentioned concerns with the project, and at that point, expressed concerns both with the parks area, as we're going to hear next on our agenda, our budget process. It is a little bit difficult from time to time, and the parks is quite a bit of a lift when we start talking about properties being donated to the town. When EPCON came to us for the Russell Oaks development, some of you guys on the council might remember, there was a comparison of if we don't do this, then we will do that. And there were similar amounts of homes and the proposals that were out there. This is a little bit different for me. I mean, again, it abuts my district. We go from a current zoning classification of less than one home per two acres, which, you know, would limit this to about 90 homes if they decided to develop it the way that it's currently zoned, as opposed to now being up to the, you know, 2-plus. And the reason I ask for clarification on the comments about the PUD, I mean, from where I stand, we have to be, I think we have to be cognizant of the fact that we've got seven different developments that are coming online over the next few years, whether it's the Woodlands Project, Bradley Ridge, Promontory, Adler Apartments, Russell Oaks, Wild Air, the Farm. That's over 1,750 properties. I had this at 2.65, but with what Mr. Pfeiffer said at 3.6, that's 6,300 people, and those people have not been felt yet. And then obviously with another 362, even at 1.7, you know, that's a significant amount of people that we've got to make sure that we're preparing for, so.
Lance, I have a question.
I'm sorry. Tried to catch you before and...
What backup do I bring for this?
Just need the expert, please.
Okay.
No. So, we started to lean into a comment about surrounding our closer, other properties that are near this area with regards to our sewer capacity. So, my question is, should we approve this today? Will the capacity level of this development be a reason to deny another property owner within our sewer district from being able to develop into a neighborhood or being able to use their given current sewer capacity, I guess is my question? So, I do know that there was comments within the presentation about half the flushes and all that, and I think that's a valid point. However, I fear if we approve this and then we get ourselves in a pickle where we can't provide sewer service to an area that is within our district based on our current capacities, and maybe that's where we just have to expand the system. But that costs money, and I don't know where that money's going to come from when we're looking at, you know, our current budgets. So, long the short is, will this force us to deny potentially somebody within our district in the future?
I'm going to turn that question around just a little bit, but the answer to that is no. Based on the technical discussions, that has been our overarching goal when this went in, is with this development being slightly unique, and it's always been outside of our calculation area, so we'd really like our system to be whole. Now, and I'm going to use the word "system" to be our collection system. For now, we're not even talking about the plant. I don't have concerns about the plant. We are in the beginning phases of a four- to five-year program to grow the plant, so I am not at all concerned about plant capacity right now. Where we have our restrictions is how we get the F-limit to the plant. So, in this area, they've been working with George, and we've said basically, when this is, if this is approved and the system is built, we want to be right where we are with our system capacity, so no one else suffers. Now, when I said turn that question around, any development out in this area is going to face these same challenges, even if you're in our sewer service territory as it is established, meaning the system is limited everywhere. So...
The access.
Pardon me?
The system access is what you're talking about, not the capacity. It's the system access.
It's both.
No matter where it is over there.
It's both.
Whether it's this development or the adjacent access is what you're...
It is both access and capacity in the system, okay? Because remember, to get all this effluent to the plant, you've got to go through a series of gravity pipes and lift stations, all right? And those lift stations become the pinch points. So, you've got your, when I talk about capacity in the system, you have pipe diameter and how big the pumps need to be. And so far, they've listened to everything that Mr. Lewis has said and seem to be planning to basically make us whole as a result of their subdivision or their development.
Thank you. I'm comfortable with that answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi. I wanted to kind of tackle density. I came to your place. I did like your product. I think it's great, the concept behind having a place for people who want to stay in Zionsville to move on from their family home, to create a dynamic where new families can move in without adding subdivisions. I think that's obviously a very big bonus of your model. And I do struggle with one concept, and I'm not sure who can clarify this for me, but it would be tax-related. The sales pitch that 362 homes wouldn't bring the additional traffic, I know you said was done through a traffic study, but I am someone who is 55. I don't hide my age, and I do still drive multiple times a day. I think in the PUD, I may have read that it only had to be 80% 55, or am I making that up? No, I did read that. Okay. So, there could still be families in there who don't hit that age, correct, that they could have? Is that right in the PUD? You don't have to clarify it right away, because I'm sure I'll ask seven questions within one question. But it got me to thinking, when I read your presentation, it also said that you have givers and active people who live in your type of neighborhood, but I think that goes against the sales point that you won't have them driving on the road. I love the idea of people who are chasing their grandchildren. I myself am a grandmother. That alone, if my granddaughter lived around the corner, I'd be driving all the time to go see her. It gets me to a concerned place, which I brought up, the taxes of the schools. So, one of the points of positivity is that it won't impact our schools because there won't be the kids in the houses, but we aren't the school district for this area. So, therefore, that benefit doesn't benefit us, but the burden of the active grandparents does affect our roads. So, it kind of, for me, negates that benefit unless, and this is the ultimate question I had, does the tax dollar, I was always under the impression the tax dollar followed the child to their school district. I see Tim Berry. Maybe you could help me with this. Would there be a tax benefit from the referendum to Zionsville that I could get behind? But if the tax dollar follows the child to Lebanon, my communication right now is, I think we're getting the burden of the people having a higher density than is currently zoned without the benefit of the school not being affected, because our schools wouldn't have been affected. Am I thinking that correctly, Tim? Would you hit that one? Because ultimately, that brings the density concern a little bit higher on my list of, should we consider this?
Put Tim on the spot.
I'm sorry, Tim. I know you're...
Tim Berry with Crow. I am the municipal advisor to the town. I do not represent the school corporation, either Lebanon in this case. It's my understanding it is Lebanon Schools or Zionsville Schools. I will comment more as, so I hate to overlook that question, but I really am not prepared to answer that question.
That's fine.
As it relates to the schools. But I will say, as we move to a system in Indiana based on Senate Bill 1 that drives growth in communities and growth in revenue to income tax, certainly higher-density, higher-income net worth individuals is what communities are going to be striving to as they continue to try and grow their tax base.
So, the statement that was said by Dale, you said either the ball fields or the density was what I heard in your approach of density. And I just wondered if there was any way to lessen the number from 361 to keep a more palatable amount of homes in this area. I think your product is awesome. I think the theory behind your product is awesome. But I do think it is a stretch for us to jump that much in density when that is the number one drum that is beat for us from our town of our roads are hard to drive. Our farmland made it, so we have a bunch of skinny roads, and it doesn't seem like where you are should affect everybody, but it really does. And with us having budget cuts, I don't see us making huge infrastructure improvements right now. So, that's the push I have was, is there a number that you could drop off the 362 baseball fields? I know that's been a mayoral, I don't want to say push, but angle. And I don't know how everyone up here feels. We haven't discussed this amongst us. We wait until the meetings, but us saying not getting baseball fields and still having 362 homes doesn't make me feel better. So, I don't know if that's how you all feel. This is obviously when we can discuss it. I'll stop there.
I have one question, just as a clarifier. It might be Mike. I've heard two different numbers. Current zoning right now, if this were not to pass, is there, that 180 homes could currently be built on these three properties, or is it 90?
180 homes on...
Current zoning?
Yeah. Current zoning, one dwelling unit per acre. 180 homes.
With the rural, is it one dwelling per unit?
I think one per two. R1 residential's...
With no sewer, isn't it one per two?
With no sewer, yes.
Because right now, we have no sewer.
Right, right.
And it's rural, so it's, we could only build 90.
Timeout. Is the official answer 90 or 180?
Currently.
Current zoning.
Okay. 90 on no sewer.
Okay, because I've heard 180, and we did our research, and we talked about 90. I guess, Mr. Pfeiffer, if you want to come up and explain, I'm confused. I want to know what it's going to be zoned now as it sits here today. I don't want any back and forth.
Yeah. My understanding is that, looking at the zoning map, right now, it's zoned R1, and when you pull up our zoning, it says, rural single-family residential district is hereby established to be low-density rural residential district. The lot area and minimum floor area requirements are intended to be larger than other rural resident districts, and development in this district typically has a density of less than one home per two acres.
Right. I think that's part of what we were having, is going back to the anticipated change versus where we... change versus where we are right now. And so we're going from 90 to 362 if we're talking about today zoning.
Not on sewer.
Not on sewer.
Right.
Yeah, I'm trying to get to, if it were developed as it's zoned now and planned and decisions that were made before my time, 90 homes could go up. Or if we consider changing this, there'll be 362 homes, and I get that there's a sewer difference. That sewer expansion and the other homes will be on septic. That sewer expansion could also lead to, you know, neighboring, potential neighborhoods down the road that'll tap into that same sewer line. Once it's there, then it's going, right? When you've expanded the sewer line. Just a couple of comments, and I echo a lot, this is a, this has not been an easy decision to weigh, because there's a lot to like about this proposal as stated. I love that there's some age restriction for 55 and over, and there's some real benefits there. It may be overstated on terms of traffic. There is a need for smaller homes in our community, for people to downsize, or that overgroup, or grandparents, or whatever it might be, people who don't need 4,000 square feet anymore. The quality of the product is to be admired. There's some nice AV in there for the town as well at that price point. Like Jason and probably Craig as well, I voted for the Russell Lakes project a few years ago. In fact, it was one of the first votes I think I took on council. There was a lot I liked about that, it was, even though it's high density at 3.0, it's right off Oak Street, there really wasn't a traffic problem at all. I liked, there were some estate homes in there around the lake. I thought it was the right community and the right project for where it was located. And you'll see that we're continuing now across the street, there's a lot coming in with wild air. But I have struggled with a few things. One, you heard the mayor say earlier that we're going to have a comprehensive plan in front of us in a month. If not, we're going to have something by the, in the next two weeks to look at. And I know this is in there now, but I've really struggled to say, you know, if it's a small change, or, you know, an individual property or something, but to change a PUD before the ink is dried on a comprehensive plan, I've just really cautioned any large development before we really get a hand around what we want our vision for the future of Zionsville to look like. So I'd just have been leery about any large project before the PUDs, before the comp plan is passed. And, you know, I've sat up here and I think a lot of projects that have come forward, I mean, there is, and I know Dale said it's not all about density, it's about impact, but I am a density-focused person, because that's why everyone in Zionsville tells me when I'm out and about in the community for the last six years through two campaigns. People want right-sized development, they know there's going to be development, but they want it to look and feel consistent with what Zionsville is. And there is a rural district, there's an urban district, and I think every project that you mentioned, Jason, they're coming online with 1,700 homes, I voted for all of them. So I've not voted against really anything, except for the last project that came before us that had a similar challenge. I get that there's going to be something developed there. Right now it's 90 homes, apparently. I guess if sewer came to it, it could be 180. We're asking for 362 homes on 154 net acres, once the donation is given away. And I get Dale's conundrum of, well, if we didn't give you the ball fields, we could actually get the density down on paper, if that makes sense. And I love the baseball diamond idea, but let's also not confuse the idea that that's also going to drive a lot of traffic. 24 fields, 25 families per game, per hour, it's a lot of traffic coming out in and out of that area. So my question has been, I love the project, if it were in different places, I would vote for it immediately. Is this the right location for this EPCon community? And I'd love to see something like this in Zionsville. Hampshire's 250 homes with a net density next door of 2.0 per acre. I think Hampshire's actually a little large for what I would like to see there. I like what Pemberton has done a little better, but it is what it is. The density here, when you take away the 26 acres, is actually 2.4. And I know Dale said 2, I'd love it to be 2. If it were 2, I think I would vote for it. The question is, it's actually 2.4 minus those donated acres, which I just alluded to, which I think is just a little bit higher than I'd like to see. And, you know, I have asked a number of people, but specifically the EPCon folks even last week, is there, or was there any chance to get this density down a little bit to closer to 2.0? Could we trim 40, 50 homes off this project and still make it work? And I think the answer is no. I mean, they've done the math, and I appreciate, you know, the dollars and cents of this and what they have to have to make it worthwhile for the company to make money. But that's just where I am. I really struggle with it, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment, unless, and I think a lot of council members would maybe feel the same way, is there an opportunity to kind of come back with a pencil and trim the density here to make something really happen or not?
Well, let me just talk a little bit about the density in your specific question. I think we'd be remiss on behalf of the neighborhood and everybody else that supported this to suggest that there might not be some opportunity to continue the discussion. We've had so much support from the surrounding neighbors, and in particular from Hampshire, which is two acres per acre. I don't know if I agree legally with the interpretation that Mr. Dale has, since the ordinance provides for one acre, one house per acre gross density. But notwithstanding that, whether it's 180 or whether it's 98, I trust that those discrepancies give you concerns as well, whether it's 98 or whether it's 180. I guess the problem is that we've, this development has gone through a number of different iterations. It's been looked at, given the complexities of it over a couple of years. And so we've been in discussions with the administration with regard to, all right, what kind of dedication? It started with a lot less acreage. So if you're asking us to take a haircut in density, are you also willing to reduce the amount of land that's going to be dedicated to the town? Because essentially, we buy that land and we're giving it to the town. So that seems to be, I think, a reasonable question that we have, is, and is that sufficient for the mayor as well? Because we've had discussions with his administration, recognizing all of this has to be done, hopefully, in an amicable way, in a way that satisfies everybody, not just the mayor's office, but the council certainly has a huge role to play in all of this. So I guess the answer would be yes. I don't know that we're prepared. Do you have a number in mind? I mean, if you're asking me here, if we, if density might be reduced, what number are you talking about?
Well, I had mentioned 40 or so homes, you know, to kind of get you closer to a number. I don't know where that...
And if you don't have a specific number, we'd be happy to try to continue the dialogue to see if we can find an amicable place.
And if I could just add, Mr. Andrew, really, just real quick, is that okay, Brad? I just have, I need to know what we're going, what it is currently zoned versus what it's going to be, or what it could be, right? So this, I know that you say that there's a matter of different interpretation as to how you look at the zoning ordinance, but I'm hearing 90 on one end and 180, right? So that's an issue of 4X or 2X?
It's sewer versus not sewer, and there's no sewer currently, so then it is 90.
Right.
If you go by exactly what is happening today, the zoning is 90, because it's two acres per one house with no sewer in the rural area. So that's what this is.
Right, right.
There's no gray area.
And if you look at the chart, it's one house per acre. It's, this came from the, unfortunately, this was adopted from the county's chart when this ground was taken in through the reorganization and we did our ordinances. So I can tell you, out in the county, it's been interpreted as one house per acre. Zionsville may interpret it, and developments occurred on that basis, one house per acre, gross density. And you can go down to 5,000 square feet lots. We're proposing 6,000 square feet for these lots, but under the county ordinances. So you inherited this, you inherited the interpretation of it, you inherited the complexities of it, and I think the irregularities of it. Notwithstanding all of that, you'll have to make that call. I've always interpreted it as one house per acre, because that's what the ordinance says, but that's the lawyering of it. And as a practical matter, you'll have to listen to staff, that's who's talking to you here today. And it would be inappropriate for me to suggest that you disregard staff based upon my, either legal analysis or interpretation of it.
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head for me when you said irregularities, right? I want, I live in a world of black and white, and I want to know what I vote on. When I'm voting on this, I want to know if we're doubling the current density or we're quadrupling the proposed density.
I understand.
So it's a big, it's a big issue for me.
I think that's a great point, you know, whether we're doubling or whatever it is, but we also have to consider what's coming to this location. We can't take a farm field and say, oh, one house per two acres, that's what we're allowed to do, and that's what we should cast to a developer that's going to improve the property.
I think the key for us has always been in our discussions with the neighborhood, regardless of the density or what, was, what the product might be, and the fact that we're not taking it from an ag zoning, which has essentially no ability to have a major residential subdivision or PUD with any form of density to one with density. So our discussions have always been, at least it's not, it's not from an ag zoning, it is a residential zoning, it's the old zoning classification, but it is what it is. I have a different interpretation, but regardless, we are where we are on it, and Ms. Burke, I think it would, I think it behooves us to continue to have some discussion about this. The other practical thing is that, obviously, Mr. McAldery, given, in his district, needs to hear about if we're going to, he has any thoughts with regard to density change as well. Recognizing it's a council decision, but that is his district, so we have to be at least particularly concerned about the fact that that's his district, at least from our end. So...
Well, I certainly appreciate that you're willing to maybe have a conversation about some density. And I agree that maybe we need some legal clarity around, is this 90? I mean, we're reading it one way, you're suggesting that maybe there's a carryover from a county plan that maybe was different than zoning that would be in Zionsville, which I would find hard pressed to...
And I think that's how Union Woodlands got in.
So maybe, yeah.
Because it was under county, but it's not anymore, is the point. It's not anymore, so...
So it was.
I think that would, I think that would drop.
But it would be, it would be good to know, for sure. So I mean, and I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate that you might be willing to have some conversation.
Joe's online listening, and he just wanted to, Joe Stein, and he wanted to talk about the water pressure in Hampshire being subpar, and he just wondered if that would be a concern, or is there anything done to improve, I guess, the water pressure? I don't understand the couplings and the pipe underneath the ground, but that was just something brought up that he would like considered as well if this were to move forward.
Well, I know, I know when we did our sewer study, there very well may be some type of water study. I don't think we did one because it wasn't part of our system, it was part of the, you know, another, whatever system serves that particular area, that had been in that area. But we've had discussions with them, and there seemed to be no issues with capacity to bring water there. The real discussions we had with...
But if it were from Whitestown or from Zionsville, if the water would continue, because I know that's different water sourcing.
Yeah, it'd be the same water system across the street.
Okay.
Across 800, we'd be using the same water company that would extend that water. That didn't seem to be the problem. The real, I think, push point was the sewer and the ability to, how to, plant capacity was okay, but how do we, how do we get it there? What are the needs in terms of being able to do that? One other thing, I have a number for you that Mr. Pfeiffer suggested to me. If you would agree to a reduction of 40 lots, we could keep the plan as presently as is, meaning the dedication of land as is, with no dedication of land, in order to try to facilitate some type of approval here today. I wouldn't anticipate, as long as we're not changing any of the other specifics, we'd need to send it back to the Plan Commission, because we're not increasing units, we're actually reducing units. But council can so advise in terms of what that would be. But if that is a number that you would be willing to do, Mr. Pfeiffer said they would be willing to go ahead and reduce this from the 262 by another 40, 40 home sites.
362 to 322.
So I just want to comment, so if we do something like that, we lose out on 40 more taxable homes, right? And we lose a property that's usable by the rest of the town of Zionsville. So I have concern with that personally. I like your proposal. The only thing that I'm really struggling with is, you know, we have this road over here to the, to the west, East 425 South, and we maintain it as a three-way intersection until we decide as a town to develop the dedicated site. I think that should have been addressed in this, and I'm not an engineer, so with regards to the street being not needed to be improved or any of that, I just, I see a T in the road, and I just, it doesn't make sense that we're leaving a T in the road right next to the development when we're adding 1, 2, 3, 4 intersections or inner ways to come into this neighborhood. So I just wanted to cast that out to the rest of the council, if we are going to, you know, postpone this, I'd like to maybe have us look at that. You know, one of the worst things I think we've had to do recently was the Big Four Rail, I love the Big Four Rail Trail, I hate that intersection in the corner. You cross the Big Four, I'm sorry, you cross 400 at a diagonal, I think that was the worst, one of the worst things that we could do. However, now we're going to develop next to it, utilize the Big Four Rail Trail and all the pathway connectivity around this development. And then, you know, it sounds like right now you're asking this developer to, you know, take away 40 lots and then take away 26 acres of dedicated property to the town.
Yeah, no, that's not, just to clarify, I believe that it's taken away 40 homes and maintained still the 26 acres.
No, that's not it. That was the, that was, that was just proposed.
Yeah, we need clarity on that one.
We are proposing to reduce, voluntarily reduce our density in other 40 lots. Nothing regarding the dedication of the ground itself will change. Still 26 acres dedicated to the town.
I'm sorry, I misheard. Thank you.
And I may not have made myself clear, so I apologize with regard to that, but I wanted to make sure that that was, that that was clear, that we were not reducing with that plan, we would not called, I asked rhetorically before I talked to Mr. Pfeiffer with regard to numbers, whether you'd be interested in reducing that for reduction, because it's all a cost issue in the end.
Absolutely.
And so he indicated 40-lot reduction would not cause a reduction in any of the dedicated land, the 26 acres would still be reduced. One thing I want to make sure that is clarified, we will probably have to go back to the Plan Commission, because if we're, if we're just reducing lots, we have to come up with a new concept plan, and the new concept plan is part of, part of the actual PUD itself. I don't know whether that would bring us back to the Plan Commission or not, or whether we can work through that with council. We'll have, you can have a discussion with council with regard to that. But obviously, where things are will have to change internally a little bit, because if you're eliminating 40 lots, you got to, the basic change, the actual areas where you go into should not have to change, and we do not have a cut on the county road into this development off of County Road 400. Specifically, staff requested, given the Big Four Trail there, we not have a cut off of County Road 400 into this development, and our concept plan currently does not have that. So making sure that we do not have a cut in there. So that was something that was required by staff, and that County Road 400 is totally uninterrupted by a cut into... uninterrupted by a cut into this development to County Road 400, so...
So I think one of, one of my jobs as Town Council President, I think, is to make sure that we move forward with legislation and ordinances and resolutions in an appropriate manner and a timely manner. Obviously, we're required to hear this today, because it's the first regular scheduled meeting after the Plan Commission meeting where it was approved. I think Joe, Councilor Stein would bring up good questions about water pressure. I think there's concerns about density. I do think there's traffic concerns even with what Council Burke mentioned regarding the land and the ball diamonds and such. And I would say that while I appreciate the donation of the land, we are currently sitting in a spot where we have received a donated parcel of land north of town that could cost us over $35 million over the next 15 years. So those are things that we have to all take into consideration. With that being said, I think not only because Tim's district is where this particular proposal lies, Joe is an at-large counselor, and I think it's relevant for him likely to weigh in on that as well. So I think with the understanding that we can get clarification on current zoning, Mike, and maybe John Oberlander can help with that from the town's perspective, what is the current zoning allowed, 90 or 180, as it sits today, compared to where we're looking at going here? I would say, I've heard just in the conversation up here, that maybe the 40 wasn't enough for some folks, so maybe the answer is to address these issues. The density, the current zoning, any potential water pressure concerns, which may or may not be a concern with Lance, and maybe we should just continue this to the next meeting, give everybody a chance to work with. I know it's a short meeting, we've only got about a week before you can get everything prepared for the next meeting, but we have 90 days from the Plan Commission meeting approval to take action. We just simply had to hear it today, so, I don't know, what are your guys' thoughts on that?
I mean, I don't think we can, I guess I can't undersell, I think the value of understanding what the current underlying zoning calls for, because I'm hearing two different interpretations up here. I think it's for the benefit of the public, for people who may remonstrate for or against this, although I admittedly have gotten very few remonstrations against this. And I agree with every, all the comments up here about this being a great product. I think EFCON is an excellent product, $800,000, 390 a square foot. I think we owe it to get it right and to make an informed decision. So I'm supportive of the continuance.
I'm supportive of the continuance. I did have two remonstrators.
Yeah.
I think that it's great that you're willing to get out your pencils, and I think it would be good to have the other two counselors here because of their representation being this area. I think you have a great product. I think we have a great feeling behind it, but we're the ultimate approval, and I think if there's still any kind of gray area, we should make sure we have that cleared up.
And I do want to thank...
And it's only two weeks.
I do want to thank Dale. Dale did meet with me for, I think, an hour and a half one day going through this project. So I do want to thank the petitioner for their willingness to sit down and discuss.
I agree with that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from counselors? Otherwise, I would make a motion to continue Ordinance 2025-21 to the next council meeting.
Okay.
I have a second from Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our last item of new business is a consideration of the 2026 budget. This is the first reading of our budget. This is Ordinance 2025-20, and we have Tim Berry, Town's Financial Consultant from Crowe.
Tim Berry with Crowe. Just to start things off, we've been through the process this year of updating the five-year plan, utilizing estimates through that process of the impact of Senate Bill 1. We came to a first pass on that five-year plan in July, and that became the corpus of what we started the 2026 budget with. Since that point in time, the town, the administration, in individual meetings with department heads, along with meetings with council members and department heads over the last few weeks, have reduced that budget and those expenditures so that we can present to you a balanced budget for the 2026 year. In that balanced budget, there still are some risks, because we still don't know full impact of Senate Bill 1, but we do have better estimates from the Department of Local Government Finance as well. They have, in the last few months, come out with a determination that the town would be eligible to apply for an excess levy appeal based upon your growth in excess of the state's average on assessed value over the three years, if adopted, or if approved, I should say, by the Department of Local Government Finance. That would amount to $1.54 million in new revenue. Those dollars are already in the budget estimates that you have before you. We have as well included supplemental lit in distributions within the revenue forecast for 2026, although we have reduced that amount from what the town actually received this year in supplemental lit, so that we are presenting a conservative estimate on supplemental lit. But that dollar amount is $1.85 million in that local income tax line. The full impact of Senate Bill 1, as determined by DLGF, is just under $800,000 for next year. And that is an impact that the town will continue to feel every year moving forward. In fact, it is expected that that dollar amount impact in loss of property tax revenues due to supplemental homestead and tax cap issues will continue to grow over the coming years, because the supplemental homestead deductions will continue to increase approximately 6% every year through 2031. As a result, revenues are relatively flat between the 2025 budget and what is expected in the 2026 budget. The state has allowed a max levy growth quotient of 4% that is included within that amount. On the expense side, we have included, or the town has included, approximately $725,000 in additional income adjustments to the base of salaries as they exist today, approximately $411,000 for longevity pay for employees that would qualify for that, and approximately $314,000 in a salary adjustment to that. You will see, though, that as a result, between the 2025 budget and the 2026 budget, expenses are decreased by a little over $3.7 million from 2025. This is largely in the capital outlays area, and there is a little decrease in debt because of the retirement of one debt item, and there is some reduction as well in other services and charges, and your supply line is relatively flat from 2025 to 2026. The only increases that we're really seeing are increases in personal services associated with changes that were discussed earlier. Bottom line, revenues over expenses as the budget exists today is balanced and positive to the tune of $95,551 when we take out the debt service funds and really just look at the operational expenses. And with that, I would take any questions that you may have for me or anyone else.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. I just want to point out for the public, those in this room, you'll notice a significantly different budget process this year. This budget currently presented is high-level, a big picture, and will be modified before our next meeting. Over the last few years, we've held public meetings online with different department heads, all in the room. This year, each counselor met with the mayor, his team, assigned department heads, and reviewed their individual budgets together. I appreciate, I want to say publicly, I appreciate each counselor for your full engagement on these efforts for this process, as well as the mayor's willingness to provide access to staff and department heads. Again, this budget is the initial budget. We have two weeks to work with each department and the mayor for individual changes that you guys have all identified, and we will certainly accomplish the goals and objectives of the council, staff, and administration through that process. Just make sure you're providing additional feedback to the mayor following this meeting, and we'll make sure we get those accomplished, and with Tim as well, so...
Tim, I guess the only question I have is, I mean, I can see all the macro numbers, and then you'd mentioned, obviously, the greatest expense to the budget, other than, and I appreciate everybody really on the administrative side of the House and all of our department heads and their teams, really getting lean, taking a good look at everything, and trying to make sure that, you know, these cuts, no one appreciates these cuts. They're hard, but simultaneously, I think that the biggest commitment that I know that council has asked to see, and I believe everybody wants to see, is that as best we can, we're taking care of our staff. I appreciate that there's no loss of staff, that we're maintaining our current staff. There's longevity pay, which I think is a wonderful advantage to keep our best seasoned staff. And you had mentioned then that there was another $300,000, almost $400,000 in salary increases. Can you explain, is that a 1% across-the-board increase to staff? Is that what I'm seeing? I can't see the detail, I see the numbers, but I don't know the rationale.
As of now, it currently is allocated at $1,500 per employee, but that certainly is something that can be adjusted.
It's not a percentage, it's a flat percent, it's a flat, and it's a salary increase?
It is not built as a base builder yet, but that certainly is something up to the council's determination.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah. The concern that everyone has across the state of Indiana is Senate Bill 1 is not just a one-time effect. It's going to have long-term impacts to local government funding, and it's not just something that will impact the next two years. Your property tax revenues for the indefinite future will be impacted as a result of the impact of Senate Bill 1. And so many communities are looking at trying to reduce those budgets and the balance of those budgets that would be used carrying forward. Obviously, the town went to great steps this year to balance the budget. A large portion of that adjustment, though, came from capital expenditures, and those are not things that can continue indefinitely without that investment in capital expenditures as well.
Anything else from counselors? Begin this introduction, first reading introduction.
I guess I just have one. Based on what you said, we're going for the setting of the rate, but we're going to continue to be involved in the decision-making of the final budget for next time. We would have the breakdown of the actual amounts. Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Yep. Yeah, unless somebody has additional news for me, my understanding is we'll have the department budgets and be able to continue to work through those over the next week, week and a half, so that we can, you know, I got the mayor, deputy mayor. Jenna's even shaking her head yet, so that's good.
Go Jenna.
Everything has been entered into Gateway. The budget has been advertised for Gateway with all of that detail.
I just didn't know how fluid everything became after we set the rate with our second approval, so...
And again, there is $1.54 million in revenue based upon the excess levy appeal, which will require, at the time of budget approval, the town council to approve a resolution moving that item forward to DLGF. Just need to make that clear.
Anything else for Tim?
No, nothing for Tim, just a general comment that I look forward to. I was given the opportunity to meet with fire and police. I think those are probably the two of the highest priorities in terms of staffing. I want to thank the gentlemen from the local being here today, show their support for the budget process and for the letter that we received last night as well. So continue to look forward to making those adjustments and making those shifts to help out fire and police. Thank you.
Very good. If there's nothing else, I will make a motion to introduce Ordinance 2025-20.
Second.
And I have a second from Counselor Sampson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. Up next are other matters. Are there any other matters from counselors?
I would just like to congratulate Fire Chief of the Year, Mr. Jamie Van Gorder, who was nominated and selected as the Fire Chief of the Year by the Indiana Fire and EMS Leadership Conference this past week.
Yes, congratulations, Jamie.
You're here.
All right. Anything else from counselors?
I also wanted to thank all the department heads. I know it's been a lot of work just having been in behind the scenes with the unknown of SB 1 effects, and I appreciate the extra time that you have all paid, the attention to detail, so thank you.
All right, last call. Anything else? All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Nope.
We should have had a public hearing on Exhibit S 12. I'd have on the budget, so do you want to?
Okay. I will withdraw my motion to adjourn.
We cannot adjourn.
All right. So Ordinance 2025-20 did call for a public hearing. I approve of publication of the public hearing. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. If there's any members of the public who would like to speak, sing non, I'll close the public hearing. Do we need to re-motion that, Adam, or are we?
You're good.
Okay, we're good. All right, then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second from Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five in favor, zero opposed. The next regular Town Council meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 6, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Zionsville Town Hall Council chambers. Final notice will be posted in compliance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Thank you.